We're kinda out of order tonight, so bear with us. We're awarding you this plaque for the Adopt a Street Cleanup Program that Carl Albert participates in every year. We appreciate all your contributions and we ask that you continually be involved in your community. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you. Here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks for your help. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
You bet. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Midwest City Council meeting for May ninth, 2017. Go ahead and call this order, this is caller meeting to order, our opening business. Mr. Sullivan, would you come down and offer the invocation? Please stand.
Mayor, Council, thank you for continuing this tradition. I appreciate you allowing us to do this. Would you bow at me, please? Gracious Lord and Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing be upon this evening. Father, the decisions that are before this council, we ask that you ask them, we ask that they put aside their personal agendas and that they make wise decisions that would be for the benefit of the whole. Thank you for their willingness to serve. Thank you for this great community that we enjoy living and working and playing in. Father, we thank you so much for men and women who are also serving this great land. Father, I'd ask this evening that you be with them and offer them protection, peace, and comfort to their families as well while they're away. Father, we just thank you so much for the ultimate example that we have of service and sacrifice through what you and your son did by sending Jesus to the cross. We thank you for that sacrifice. Thank you for the grace and mercy that we've been shown. Ultimately, we thank you for conquering the grave and rising on that third day. We ask all of this in your Son, Jesus' holy name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Be seated. Okay, going around our horseshoes. Is there any community-related announcements? There's nothing going on in our community we need to announce.
Well, I would like to wish all the mothers a Happy Mother's Day Sunday and have a great one and a blessed one. Okay?
Thank you.
I have one. I'd like to announce that the German academic team got invited to go to Nationals and so there's a meeting Thursday night to see if we can come up with funds to send them there. So, national academic teams, quite a feat, so.
Okay. We do have a big thing coming up in like next week. It's called the Air Show. And the Thunderbirds are going to be performing here at Tinker Air Force Base. Tinker Air Force Base is preparing a hundred, for a hundred and fifty thousand visitors to our community and the base over the next two days, May nineteenth and twentieth. So, if you've never been out to that base and observed some of the aircraft and just being around that, I strongly suggest you go. And get out there early because parking is at a premium. There is increased security on the base for obvious reasons, but if you're just going out there to see the air show, you are allowed to go on. Don't take any ice chests or anything and I would refrain from taking any backpacks or anything like that. But go out there and have a good time. It's a fun time out there.
Are there any special gates you have to go through?
Good question, Charles. The gates off of Douglas are for the, for the air show. And the air show actually, they start allowing people onto the base at eight o'clock in the morning and the air show concludes around four o'clock in the afternoon. And the Thunderbirds will be the first aerobatic act up, so. Thanks for asking that. Anything else? We do have a few proclamations to do tonight, so. I'm sorry. Chief, ladies from called to serve, come down here for me. As most of you know, I was a police officer for thirty-one years and actually we've kinda switched roles, haven't we?
Probably have, Mayor.
But we've had an unprecedented loss of two officers almost in a month in our local region. And I want to preface this by saying that being a police officer is an inherently dangerous business. It's one of the few professions that when you get up, you put your uniform on, and you go out the door and you say goodbye to your family, there is that possibility that you won't come back. So, I don't want to damper this, but I want to make that realization clear to everybody. It is inherently dangerous and although I am biased, we do have one of the best police departments in the state of Oklahoma. So, with that being said, yes, sir?
Can we introduce the?
No, you bet. These ladies up here with me are called to serve. These are the wives and spouses of our officers and what they do is very special. They fix meals, they comfort those that are in distress. You name it, the chief asks for it, they provide it. And they're very special ladies. And I want to give you guys a big hand for all the work that you do.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
This is Megan O'Hare, Megan O'Hare, Megan, O'Hare, I'm Megan. This is Megan and I'll let you introduce her to everybody else.
Okay. This is my daughter Harper. This is Tiffany Smith and Parker, Gina Starcher and Karen Landers, Kyla Melina and Crystal Doty.
These are all wives of our police department and children. With that being said, next week is National Police Week. And I want to read this proclamation and give you a little bit of history about it. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States has designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas there are approximately five thousand seven hundred and eighty-five, seven hundred and eight, a hundred and fifty-two officers serving in communities across the state, including dedicated members of the Midwest City Police Department, a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which incessantly provides a vital service. And whereas there were five, fifty thousand two hundred and twelve assaults against police officers in 2016, resulting in fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-one injuries since the first recorded death in seventeen ninety-one, there have been more than two, twenty thousand law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated officers are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington DC with the service and sacrifice of the officers killed in line of duty to be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial and the Twenty-Ninth Annual Candlelight Visual on May fifteenth, thirteenth in the evening. Whereas the Candlelight Visual is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May fifteenth through the twenty-first, with May fifteenth being designated Police, Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor all fallen police officers and their families. Whereas US flags will be flown at half-staff. And now, therefore, I'm Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim fifteenth, twenty-one, May, 2017 as Police Recognition Week. These ladies have handed out blue ribbons. I ask that next week you wear them in honor of those that lost their lives protecting the citizens of their community. Again, I want to thank you guys for being here. Chief, thank you for all that you do and.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You bet. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Vaughn. Just two more to suffer through, ladies and gentlemen. We'll be all right.
Billy doesn't want his picture made.
Why?
Oh, it's parks, okay.
It's parks.
Go here.
I'll stay up here. It's all fall. Okay, whereas twenty, May twentieth, 2017 is Seventh Kids to the Park Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust. And whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks and whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and, what does that say? We'll skip that one. And whereas Kids to the Park Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large diverse group of participants. Whereas Kids to the Park Day will be brought into children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Therefore, I'm Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim twenty May, 2017 as Kids to the Park Day. Sorry. One more. We'll get through these, don't worry. This is to the, all the unsung heroes of this community, the people that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Collect the trash, fix your sewer lines, put the water lines in. Everything else that the place, the fire don't.
Maintain your parks.
Maintain your parks, maintain this building. There's a lot of stuff that goes on that a lot of people don't see. And this is just a small token of our appreciation. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are all of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people in Midwest City. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works, public works professionals, engineers, managers, employees from the state and local units of government and in the private sector who are responsible for and must plan, design, operate, maintain transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, keep the mayor off of them, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for all citizens of every age of the United States of America to gain knowledge and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding the importance of public works and public work programs in their prospective communities. Whereas the year 2017 marks the fifty-seventh annual National Parks, or National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I'm Matt Dukes, Mayor of the City of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-one through twenty-seven, 2017 as Public Works Appreciation Week.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. These guys are the movers and shakers up here that provide all that, along with our four hundred-plus employees that are out there every day working.
Sir, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go into their consent agenda. These items are placed on consent agendas so members of the city council by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any one item on the consent agenda does not meet with the approval of all council members or the members of the audience wish to discuss a proposed item with the council, that item will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Item D1, Discussion Consideration of Approving and Passing an Ordinance Amending Chapter Thirty, Parks and Recreation of the Midwest City Code, Article Four in General by amending Section Thirty dash forty-six A and B Golf Course Rates, Establishing an Effective Date and Providing for Repeal or Inseparability. Staff is recommending a one-dollar increase per player for the regular green fee rate and senior rate as well as a fifty-cent increase for driving range tokens at John Conrad Golf Course. In addition, staff is proposing a one-dollar increase to senior slash military green fees at John Conrad and Hidden Creek Family Golf Course. However, in an effort to attract some new senior players to both golf courses, staff proposes reducing the senior age to fifty-five and older. The proposed rates will be effective July one, 2017. I'm glad this ordinance won't apply to me.
Me either.
Well, it applies to me and would we be remiss in not speaking up on what a quality golf course we have?
Thank you. We have a.
Make a motion.
Sir, have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. Next item, over.
Discussion Consideration of Approving and Passing an Ordinance Amending Chapter Thirty, Parks and Recreation of the Midwest City Code, Article One in General by amending Section Thirty dash one C Park Hours, Posting Signs, Trespass, Disorderly Conduct, Penalty, Establishing an Effective Date and Providing for Repeal or Inseparability. Staff is recommending a change to the, in the hours of operation for the pavilions and improved playgrounds located in regional Kiwanis and Lions Parks. This change provides for seasonal hours of operation based roughly on sunset times. This adjustment is being made in an effort to provide patrol officers the ability to prohibit loitering in or near these facilities after dark. Park Board was going to be hearing this on April nineteenth. Vaughn?
I'm sorry, sir. They were unanimous.
Unanimous approval by the Park and Recreation Board for this proposed ordinance.
Move to approve?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Next discussion item?
This would be Discussion Consideration of Approving and Passing an Ordinance Amending Chapter Twenty-Five, Municipal Court of the Midwest City Code, Article One, General Provisions of the Midwest City Code by adding a new Section Twenty-Five dash forty-five Expungement Fee, Providing for an Effective Date, Providing for Inseparability, and Providing for Repeal. Attached you will find the proposed ordinance, proposed ordinance. Every month the city receives five to eight requests for expungement of records of those who have been convicted of an offense in municipal court or who were arrested by the Midwest City Police Department with charges filed elsewhere. This request is allowed by the Oklahoma statutes under certain circumstances and those circumstances have become broader over time. When a request is made, the offender files a petition in district court and serves the prosecutor. The prosecutor reviews the petition to determine whether it is in order and then either contests or agrees to the request. The proposed, the cases proceed on until a district court judge issues an order of expungement. At that time, the prosecutor is served with that order and distributes it to the court clerk and the Police Department Records Division. Those departments withdraw both the computer and the paper records and seal them. Thereafter, if anyone asked about the defendant's history or seeks the records, the person is told we have no records of that person. The prosecutor, court clerk, and records clerk, total time in these matters is at least one hour and sometimes more. The Assistant City Attorney, City Prosecutor has recommended that we impose a fifty-dollar expungement fee to be paid at the time the district court order is filed. The distribution would be sixty percent to the court fund due to the involvement of the prosecutor and forty percent to the police fund. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve?
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? Next item on the agenda?
I did read that because I felt like there would be some question about what that ordinance was. So, the next item is Discussion Consideration of Approving the Termination of the Sewer and Water Agreement with Yes Communities EXP LLC for the Water and Sewer Service Provided to Timberland Mobile Home Park Property East of the Corporate Limits of the City of Midwest City. This proposal is for terminating the service that allows the city to provide water and sewer service. There will be a subsequent agreement by the entity that assumed ownership of the Yes Communities. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve?
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Any abstention? Yes, ma'am?
No, I'm not opposing. I'm fine. Aye. But I did want to say that I thank Mr. Henson for giving clarity on these subjects to the public so they would know more about what has transpired with the expunging and some of the other issues you have here, so. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda?
Next item is Discussion on the Status, Condition, Progress, or Recommendations Concerning the Latest Evaluation of Heritage Park Mall Located at Sixty-eight O-One East Reno. I do have, let me ask, is there anyone in the audience this evening that's here to representing the owner of the mall? Okay, we, so, let the record show, no one responded to that. I do have a letter that, that I think ended up, Billy, you received when you made the request to the current owner to try to be in the, at the meeting tonight. This is actually a letter, and I'll go ahead and read it for, so it goes into the record. This is from Vincent Lee who is with Northline Development. And he says, "To whom it may concern, my name is Vincent Lee. I am a partner at Northline Development. Our company is assisting Mr. Ahmad Barini with the redevelopment of Heritage Park Mall. We are currently in negotiations to purchase a percentage of the mall as well, excluding the old Montgomery Wards. Mr. Harless earlier this week asked Mr. Barini to attend next week's city council meeting to give an update on the progress at the mall. I will speak on our behalf, but unfortunately, we'll be out of the country at that time of this hearing. If it is acceptable to the council, I will attend the next hearing to give you an update on our plans moving forward. In the meantime, Gardner Architects will be working on rendering our vision for the rehabilitation of the mall. We expect this to be completed by June first. We also have a longstanding retail tenant who is ready to take twelve to fifteen thousand square feet by year's end. Mr. Barini is currently preparing that space. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions." I couldn't answer that.
He does not. I've asked him for that. I did talk to Mr. Barini this morning and he said he would not be at the meeting because Mr. Lee said that he did not want him there representing Mr. Barini, Mr. Barini representing himself without Mr. Lee because he's going to be part owner of this property. Well, I have talked to Mr. Barini a couple of times and he said he would not be here today. So, but I do not have anything saying that Mr. Lee and Mr. Barini are partners or that Mr. Lee represents him.
I'm sorry, guys. If he wants to speak, Mr. Lee, which I'm all for, he can't speak on Mr. Barini's behalf without Mr. Barini having signed something saying to that extent, correct?
Well, I would agree and, but Mr. Barini also said he would not be here, so, either way. She's not to be represented here.
Mr. Mayor, I think there's three people that are here tonight.
Yes, they are. I was fixing to.
That we need to hear.
As soon as we get to, ladies and gentlemen, for your information, what we've done is we've made a discussion not collectively as a group, we've asked staff to prepare a, basically an overview of the progress that we're making with the, with the mall in as far as the enforcement end of it. We've got a couple of staff members that are here to give an overview. I would like to call to the podium Fire Marshal Tony first and then Mr. Stroh after he gets through and give your overview. And then, then Mr. Harless. And before you get started, Mr. Thompson, are you here for the mall? You put. Yeah, we don't have a discussion item. A, are you here for the mall, though? Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll get you on the discussion end of it. Go ahead, Mr. Tony, I'm sorry.
Well, just, I'll just try to be brief and then answer any questions specifically that you may have. Obviously, the mall has been vacant now for eight, nine, ten years or so and in everybody's mind, the mall was, you know, truly a vacant building. Until recently, we've discovered that the mall is, is portions of the mall and the Montgomery Wards Building are being used for, as an S-one storage facility. And with that being said, it now falls under the category of being, of having to meet certain codes and ordinances of the city, fire codes and that type of thing. So, in December of two thousand sixteen, we had a meeting collectively with the mall owner to discuss code compliance issues. We've met with the mall owner on numerous occasions since then, both through correspondence, onsite consultations, as well as several other meetings. We've requested a plan of action for the mall to find out what his intended purpose would be in the future as well as his plan for bringing the mall and the associated buildings, Montgomery Wards, et cetera, into code compliance so that they could receive a certificate of occupancy like every other building and business within the city. And so, like I said, that's what we've been pursuing. In January, January twenty-seventh of two thousand seventeen, we had another meeting with the mall owner in which he presented to us and introduced us to his contractors, an engineer, someone from Gardner Architectural Firm, showing that he had, he was going to, he was in the process of making plans for the mall. He also stated at that time that he was going to evacuate and vacate every, all the combustible materials, the fourteen thousand pounds of R-22 freon, the tires, the vehicles, everything from the mall. And that he was in the process of purchasing another property in order to use as a storage facility. So, that's what everybody's understanding was for the, for that, for the two-month period leading up to March twenty-seventh. March twenty-seventh, I met with him and he. March twenty-seventh, I met with him and he, he had told me that the contracts on those buildings had fallen through, and that he, he now wanted to go back and, and go ahead and use the former Montgomery Wards building as a storage facility for his multiple businesses, heat and air, roofing, construction, that type of thing. So, you know, we, we made, we had a plan of action for him. Him using the former Montgomery Wards building was contingent upon the fact that he'd bring the systems, the suppression systems, back into operability, as well as submitting a very detailed plan that I know Mr. Harless has also requested of how he would bring that building into code compliance. As of this point, we don't have any, any record, any documentation, any plan from Mr. Barini at this time. As of yesterday, we were supposed to have a meeting here collectively. The mall owner misunderstood some things, so Kevin Brown and I went to the mall to talk to the owner and do an onsite inspection. Although the mall owner has done several things that were required of him, there are still a number of items that are not into compliance at this time.
Mr. Tony, or Chief Tony? I've been, I've kind of made it a point to go by there during the weekend, on the weekends. I went by there Saturday and sat there and watched for a while. One pickup truck moving trash from one side of the building to the other, from the north side, taking it in the south side, just dumping it, made several runs. So, obviously, he's doing something which is moving junk from one part of the building to the other. I've got some specific questions. The first one, can you explain the hazards to the firemen in Midwest City and all emergency responders for the excessive amount of R-22 he has in that building? And what could happen if a fire or any type of disaster happened there? What, what type of danger are our firemen and emergency responders in?
Okay, well, obviously, there's a number of combustibles in the building. Once, once in the state of fire, all combustibles are going to be toxic. The difference being freon, R-22, contractors are outside using the product. When the, the freon escapes, it's not going to be necessarily toxic to them because, because it escapes in fresh air and that type of thing. It would have to be a very high level concentration to cause you cardiac arrhythmia and that type of thing. However, in a room that's not in fresh air, a leaking container could asphyxiate you because it displaces oxygen in the room. Now, under fire conditions, the, the containers holding the freon because it's a compressed gas become projectiles. That's why the code requires that it be in a, in a room like of masonry design and that has a automatic mechanic, or, I'm sorry, an automatic mechanical ventilation system, okay? And also a working fire suppression system, which they don't have. They do not have it operable right now. Part of the plan is for him to bring those systems up to date so that he can move the freon to that location, neither of which has occurred. But specifically, your question about the dangerous post to firefighters is that freon turns into phosgene under fire conditions. And when somebody breathes phosgene into their lungs, the phosgene mixes with the, the water in your lungs and creates hydrochloric acid. So, hydrochloric acid, unless, unless doctors have figured out a way to inject a base into your, your lungs and neutralize the acid, it just continues to eat away your lungs and it's an immediate, it's, it's a very quick death for a firefighter. There's no recovery from it, that type of thing. Whereas, normal combustibles that a firefighter may breathe in, you know, on a salvage and overhaul operation, when you suck in these particles, well, those particles go into your lungs and it takes fifteen to twenty years for it to metastasize in your lungs and then, and then give you cancer and you die twenty years later. So, you don't, you don't get to really enjoy your retirement, and next thing you know, your, your family or your wife is in the Bahamas with the pool guy because you're going.
And don't, and don't sit down yet. Okay, it's my understanding there are, there are no firewalls between the church in the center of the mall and Sears in the center of the mall. Is that accurate?
Well, there are firewalls except for the locations where the Agress points were located, where you could go from the mall to the former Dillard's and the mall to the, to what's currently the Sears.
So, is there a possibility of this gas that you just explained to us getting into those two parts of the building?
Not if he brings the systems up to date and put into that room.
Today.
It's possible. It's unlikely, but it's possible.
Okay. You gave him a pretty specific list of things he needed to take out of their tires, some other issues. Has he done anything to meet them, those standards?
Yes, sir, he has removed all the tires.
The cars?
From the A to Z facility. The, the cars are still in the garage section of the former wards. He has also removed the two outbuildings that I have requested of him for security reasons. Obviously, people were utilizing that for whatever purposes. And he's also been relocating the combustible items that, that were in the mall portion over to the Montgomery Wards section as he brings that building up into compliance, but I've not received a submitted set of plans yet for that.
So, so today, the dangers that you've talked to him about are still there?
Correct.
Is, is Mr. Lee aware of the health issues that this could possibly cause or the dangerous issues that can cause? Is he aware of any of this?
I don't know how much discussion he's had with Mr. Barini about it, and, and I can't recall exactly if he was in a, in a conversation that I had with Mr. Barini at the time or not, so I don't know if he's completely aware of it.
So, in other words, he, he does not understand the seriousness of these hazardous?
Well, with the freon specifically, maybe not, but I have very, on a number of occasions, on several meetings, been very clear to Mr. Barini and the, Mr. Lee about what is required. And in fact, I sent, after our meeting in, uh, early April, I sent them an email outlining what is, what has been agreed to, number one, and also what is expected.
So, what I understand is he's transferring it from one area to another. What is that for? I mean, is it supposed to be more protected in this particular area from where he has it at, or what, what is the move with this product?
The problem goes back really quite some time. I mean, Mr. Barini has owned the mall for eight or nine years now, okay? And everybody thought of the mall as being a vacant building, okay? Well, it wasn't until very recently that we realized by definition, the mall is not vacant. He is utilizing, utilizing it as an S-one storage facility for his multiple businesses. Therefore, he's got to abide by certain codes and ordinances within the city. Also, he's not, he, any business in the city, whether it's a municipal building, whether it's a fire station, whether it's a, a house that Jeff Moore builds, every building or occupancy within the city is required to have a certificate of occupancy. They have to go through certain inspections to make sure they're, they're safe for patrons, workers, whatever. Every building, every business is required to do that. Now, there's, there are some that fly in below the radar that you don't know about. However, all the ones that we know of are required to have a certificate of occupancy. He is currently operating illegally. He's operating without a certificate of occupancy. And because of that, it brings into, into issue several other codes that he is not complying with.
How long? You can do whatever you want. Go ahead. No, no, you're fine, go ahead. No, I'll wait.
So, your, if you will, marching instructions to Mr., I forgot his pronunciation, Barini, that stemmed from December of twenty sixteen, correct?
Correct.
So, the, the specific date was December twenty-eighth, so we're almost five months past when you gave him these marching orders. Would that be fair?
Correct.
Okay. And, um, again, and I don't, I don't at all mean to make light of the danger, the risk to our, our fire folks, okay? But I also would like for you to address, if you could, if this R-22 catches fire, you have a hazardous materials fire situation going on at that point. You also have that at that point airborne to the broader community, not just our, our firefighters. Is that a fair statement? And I'm, I'm likening this to, a few years ago, Wewoka had a former fertilizer facility that caught fire, and that all went airborne and they had a lot of sort of collateral damage as a result. Am I on the right track or am I off on that?
I'm just, I'm not an expert on how big of an event it would be. It is going to be a hazardous material event. It would be a significant fire event. We would evacuate the area. Firefighters would be in full protective equipment with their SCBAs and, I mean, and even through the salvage and overhaul operations, we would be taking tremendous care and precautions.
You said you would evacuate the area. You're talking houses that are just to the north?
Um, no, not necessarily, and I'd, I'd have to pull out some other information to be able to answer that, but for sure, if it were to happen during, when Sears was open, we would evacuate Sears, no questions asked. Also, if Life Church was, was conducting services, we would evacuate Life Church as well.
But you would do that regardless if it was a fire or if he had all these, didn't have any chemicals in there?
Right, I mean, if it's a significant fire, we would do that as well, but I mean, this is another thought to contend with other than just the fire.
Just so I'm clear, there's no real question here that Mr. Barini has created these circumstances in the Heritage Park Mall, correct, by importing these materials that he's storing there?
That would be fair to say, correct. I mean, he's, he's, he's moved, that's right, he has moved these items into the mall.
And he's created this nuisance that we're dealing with.
That's correct. He, he has basically caused his own code violations.
First, I'd like to say I'm very disappointed that Mr. Barini didn't show up. He's known about this for several weeks. That's what I'll have to say about that. Second, if he's currently not in compliance, and he's had almost five months to get in compliance, at what point do you just shut that building down and say, "You're done. You're not allowed back in here. We're going to have to have people come in here and remove all of this stuff at your expense."
Well, you know, understand, first of all, that, that was the plan that was given to us back in January twenty-seventh, is that their plan was to evacuate and vacate everything from the mall, and that they were in the process of purchasing another building.
Their failure to purchase that building should not make an emergency on our part.
No, I, I, I agree. I understand that.
But, but I think the question goes to, at, at what point do we, as a city, as the officials of the city, noting the risk to our fire folks and noting the risk to our community at large, view this as a nuisance and shut it down?
I would say that we're rapidly approaching that. I think, I can tell you that it has crossed my mind to answer your question, why don't I just go shut it down tomorrow? I can. I mean, I can go tomorrow and chain the doors and, and shut the power off to the facility, but that would be, I think that'd be a mistake. I think it would be counterproductive to what we're trying to do because here's, here's what happens. If I go and I chain the doors and I lock him out of the facility and I shut the power off to it, what happens to all the, all the materials within the building? It still remains. He's still utilizing it as an S-one storage facility, facility, number one. Locking the doors does not abate the nuisance, okay? It doesn't mitigate the hazard that's there. He can't do anything, anything about it because the doors are locked. Also, if he does make the suppression system operable, and this leads into the winter months and there's no power, and he's locked out of the building, and we have a freeze and the pipes bust, he's going to come after the city saying that we caused damage to his materials in the building. I don't think a lockout is, is the correct way to go.
But if he's not, if he's continuing to stall, which he's got a history of doing this on other projects that he has. Stall, 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 delay, delay, delay. Whether we lock the door, you lock the door tomorrow or four months from now because he's continuing to lay, at which point do we stop the bloodletting and finally say, "We're done"? I think that's where we, we, you know, we have some code issues too, and they're not near what Chief Tony's explaining. If you drive down North Metal Lane on the north side of the mall, I don't know very many people that plant shrubs on one side of a fence that grow through the fence, and that's what's happening over there. And those people that go down that street every day are looking at that junk. And if anybody else in this city did it, our code enforcement would be out there citing them every day. And I think personally, I think we're getting really, really close, and I'm not an attorney, our attorney's sitting right there, I think we're getting close to a public nuisance. And it would be my request that our attorney look at that, because there's legal ways that we can go to shut that down where we're not doing what Chief Tony just said, locking him out and causing it to get worse. It's to the point where, I agree with you a hundred percent, Sean, he is going to drag his feet until we force the issue. And I think it's to the point now where we, as a community, are tired of it. The people have let us know they're tired of it. We are all tired of it. And I think we need to turn to our attorney and say, "What's next to solve this problem?" And, and unhook these guys, let code enforcement go out there and enforce the ordinances that they would in every other neighborhood in the city, and if that's a ticket a day, it's a ticket a day. If the fire marshal goes out there, if he goes to any other business, what would you do there? Let, have those guys, whatever they do, someplace else, it's, it's done. We're done talking to him. If he thought this was important, he'd have been here tonight. And I think by him not being here, he shows to me what he thinks of us.
I, I agree with you and...
With, with all due respect, the, the staff does have a, a plan in place and they're working on that, and they're coloring the blocks, if you will, on issuing citations. Am I not correct, Mr. Tony?
That's correct.
We're to that point. For the sake of time, could I ask Mr. Stroh to come down and, and explain the code enforcement strategy that you've enforced and, and where we're going with that?
To kind of address what Councilman Byrne said, we did write notices back in November. We did the study per their agreement with him and his investors and everyone. We let those notices sit till the study was done so he could determine what to do. At the end, when the study was given to him, time had elapsed, everything was done, we closed those notices from a neighborhood services nuisance code perspective, and we reissued them all. So, he received six new notices in March twenty-ninth of two thousand seventeen from my department. They have all expired. We went and we rechecked them. He abated two of the issues. Issue one was the fencing area, and you need to understand that the way the mall is split, there's two separate parcels. And so, one parcel of the fence was abated. The other parcel of the fence was not abated. He received a citation that is in our court system today that'll go to court in two weeks for that fence that was not abated. He was written for an outbuilding, as Mr. Tony stated, also from us. That outbuilding is gone. We cleared that case. The other properties, though, he, he has boarded all the doors and windows, as you can see, from the south side of the mall. He did not board the broken windows and stuff that we gave him notice for. So, he received citation for the windows that are broken that is in our court system for two weeks. The wind, the doors that are boarded now are bare wood, and that's a separate violation, and so a new notice is sent on the boarding, the bare wood.
And so a new notice is sent on the boarding, the bare wood, for the paint itself. If he paints it, it, it stays, but the boarding is, is an issue. Um, general exterior, closest to the Life Church loading dock area, there's an area with bars that had plywood siding over it, the plywood siding has been ripped off and you can gain, a person cannot gain entry, but animals in, um, can gain entry into the mall. And so that was given a general exterior notice, that was not abated. So that received a citation that'll be in court, uh, in our courtroom in two weeks as well. And then, um, painting of certain boarded areas that were already up, um, was not addressed on that parcel, and so that was the fourth citation. So, code enforcement cleared two of the past citations and wrote four cita- uh, not citations, cleared two of the past notices, wrote four citations for the notices that have expired. Then we also mailed two new notices, one to each parcel, for the new boarding of the entrances. We also mailed nuisance code for grass and tree limbs. Um, t- uh, wrote yesterday, of which Mr. Berini stated that his maintenance guy will be there Thursday this week to address those. Um, so those are issues that we can contract and abate when those time limits are up. Um, but the other issues are structural, of which we write citations.
Mike, how would, obviously, there's a, uh, perhaps a, um, uh, a separation, so to speak, between what, what, uh, the fence looks like, um, how it appears versus...
Ugly and illegal?
Ugly versus illegal, yes, sir.
Yes, um, the fence itself has to be a site proof. So, per our code, the bushes are a site proof, so that would work. He does not have to have the fence where the bushes are. There is no code that addresses pruning or trimming of the shrubbery, but the fence is still there and deteriorating and pieces are falling out of it towards the road, as you mentioned. And therefore, that is a violation because if you have a fence, you have to have it maintained. So if he would go in and trim, and I've said that to my code officer that works the area, if he would clean the saplings out, he wouldn't have half his fence being tore apart. Now, in his defense, he has had youth kick out parts of the fence and use it as a pass-through. Well, again, I don't see that to be a problem because he can do exactly what Life Church did and make an actual walkway through the fence, um, by still keeping site-proof separation, but he chooses not to do that, he keeps patching where they knock it out, well, then it's new wood there and they kick out the next four pickets beside it. And it just works down the road. Um, but the shrubbery itself, uh, I agree a hundred percent, it looks horrible, it looks overgrown. It's, it's growing out into the parking lot area on the mall side and to making it where there's not a whole lot of mowing needed on the street side. And the shrubs are not a violation, now the litter in the shrubs is a violation.
And Mike, uh, just for sake of clarification, although once we get past the point of notification and you're writing citations, technically, every day that he's out of compliance, we can write him a citation, is that correct?
Correct, I believe all three divisions that are working this, building code, fire code and nuisance code states in their ordinances, every day is a separate offense.
And it has been the request of our city prosecutor not to do that, but to write them weekly? Is that my understanding?
Um, that is correct, um, that they would prefer not to do that. Environmental Court is what we'd go to with our citations and we have court once a month. And therefore, piling a citation every day, and so having thirty citations, thirty to thirty-five citations, bec- depending on, they cut the docket off typically two weeks before the, the date. You could end up with six weeks' worth of citations before you have your arraignment on your first one. Um, so they've requested not to, our normal MO is that we could provide you one and you don't show, then once you don't show, we, we up it to weekly.
So how many citations does he have?
Currently, through my division, we've written four.
Mr. Harless, you want to, uh, explain from your office where you're, thank you, Mike, I appreciate it.
Sure, uh, Mr. Tony and Mr. Stroh gave an excellent, um, report on how we ended up to this point. The, a couple of things I might add to that is, is you know, when we've met with them in the past, Mr. Berini, um, and some of the, uh, other people that he's brought to the meetings, it's always been, oh, we're waiting on a mall study, oh, I'm waiting to talk to this client, oh, well, it's gonna, it's, it was, it, when it tended to be a, 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 a storage building and it just kinda became that way. And so, a vacant building, we don't require a CO on a certificate of occupancy, but something that's used for storage, we do. And so he's always gonna been, going to have cleared out all that material. And it's obvious that he's, he's, he's not going to do that, at least into the, uh, towards part of the, the building. So what we're going to do tomorrow is, uh, start writing citations, um, probably follow it once a week. Um, example that, that, that Mike brought up and, and, uh, um, in order for him to, to comply, what he'll need to do is get with a design professional, engineer, architect, someone like that, uh, bring plans and, and say what he intends to do with, uh, all par- portions of the building and the parts that he's going to use for storage, if that's what he's going to do. He'll have to submit plans and say, how does it comply with all the, the codes and ordinances, uh, uh, to use it for storage? And it'll address a lot of the things that are in the fire department, and of course, the fire department will get a chance to review those and make comments and then, uh, and then we'll also do that and then we'll do inspections to br- to try to bring them into compliance. Uh, but our intent is to start, uh, taking it in tomorrow.
So it's a, it's a fair assessment, no, I'm sorry, it's a fair assessment that all three entities within the city are in the enforcement stage of, of, uh, eradicating this issue or, uh, eliminating this issue, is that a fair statement? And Mr. City Attorney, isn't it, uh, also a fair statement that if we end up in court with this, that we're gonna have to be able to show that all three entities that are involved in enforcement of, uh, of that property have given him a fair and clear opportunity to correct all the issues that we've identified before we go into court and then have it declared either blighted or, or a, a nuisance? Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, it's a fair statement, I, I believe it's in the city's best interest to show that you give proper, sufficient notice and then you gave proper, sufficient time to correct the issues, then you start taking actions. And I think all of those in the timeline, uh, is in the city's favor at this point.
So how long do we, how, how, how long do we let him go? Because, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Coleman, the discussions that you and I've had, I think on more than one occasion, you've said that the ten, the trend nowadays is not to enclose malls, it's the malls like, malls like we have on Twenty-Ninth Street, correct? And for this, for this guy, for the, the, the person that owns this to think that he's gonna go in there and create a new mall environment is gonna be, take a tremendous amount of money and the trend for that is not there. And if you get on the, you get on the internet, uh, there's a story that was on the news tonight about how stores are closing at epic paces. And all these mo- all these other stores that are closing and all the malls that are deteriorating across the country. We're not the only one that's faced with this. And you have these people that invest, to buy it, hopes it's gonna turn around, it isn't happening. And I would just hope that, uh, Mr. Mayor, that the, the, and I'm not saying these people aren't doing their jobs, I know they are. That at some point, and I think that point was, we're at that step right now where we get the city attorney involved in this and make sure that every I we've got is dotted, every T that we've got is crossed and that the owner of this realized, we're not gonna sit and wait another six or eight months or a year for him to, to drag it down, that we're serious and we want something done. And if it's not corrected and brought up to where it's clean, safe, and we're not losing, like a losing battle, that, that's the next step. Because I think, I think we're at that step right now.
Yeah, I, I might have been a little, personally, a little inclined to work with him a bit if he'd shown up tonight with a plan in hand and everything.
I, I gotta say one thing real quick, I think we're, we're totally at the fine and citation point. And, and, and I, I don't even really, I think this letter, uh, all this is, it, it's all a game. You know, what I want to do is this, I've got a guy on the hook who's gonna really, he, we're gonna bring this thing back. It's all a game, it is a total sham. I don't think, I would not give him one day if he goes, oh, I got this great plan. It's, it's, it's a ten-year-old game that's going on. It, it drives me crazy, that's the elephant in the room, there is no plan. There is no plan, he's playing us as a bunch of idiots. And, and he's thinking, there's a bunch of suckers there that are listening to me. I wouldn't give him five minutes. And as you said, Councilman Reed, if he gave a flip, start saying another word, he would have been here tonight.
And that, and that's, I, I, it's in my ward and it's one of the most biggest questions that I get.
Okay, so I, I wanna know...
We spent fifty-three thousand dollars on a study. I do feel that we need to make sure that our residents get their tax dollars used out of that study and that we can figure out what needs to be done. This letter is nothing but a, I don't have enough time, you're not important to me, letter. I'm gonna say whatever it takes to get you off my back for a little bit longer because it's obviously worked since December. I, this letter and his act, his lack of showing up, me personally, and I'm just one of seven, I'm done.
Well, before we go, go there, let's just say, uh, the three of you all, has there been anything improved?
Yeah, like, like I've mentioned, he's, he has removed the tires from the building, he's rem- which, that was...
But that's not an improvement.
Well, no, it's a, it's an improvement.
That's a cleaning up is not necessarily a...
It's an improvement upon, because it's considered a high hazard storage, ti- tires, when they get, when they get going, you, they're almost impossible to get put out. Uh, but he has done several of the items that I've requested. There's other items that he hasn't done. And as of right now, citations are gonna be issued. The frequency, I can't give you exactly that, the code says that it could be a new and separate offense each and every day. However, I'll be meeting with the prosecuting attorney to determine exactly how we're gonna do that. It will not be a daily event.
So, uh...
He has to have the, he has to have, I believe he's got to have the ability, I mean, we don't, you don't start, um, coming in with a sledgehammer, I don't have any documentation that he's ever received a citation from the fire department before. I'm coming in with a ball peen hammer. Okay, I've gotta give him the opportunity to make the corrections, I've gotta push him in that direction. However, I realize that citations don't mitigate the hazard, citations don't, uh, remove the nuisance. I understand that, at some point, action has got to be taken, it has to be abated, it has to be corrected. So, but the first step is citations. After that, I'll bring a bigger hammer. But right now, citations is the way to go.
I agree with you saying that we made a big investment, we, we have got to get...
I think, I think it's fair, a fair assessment that's mooted, the council and myself, that, uh, we need to move on down the road. And, uh, and I appreciate the hard work y'all have put into it. Just please continue your efforts and continue your documentation because although I'm not a, a forecaster of any way, I suspect that we're gonna end up in court over this, uh, in a big way. And, uh, and we're gonna remove, we're, we're gonna take care of the issue one way or other, is that a fair assessment?
Well, and I would like to see it returned to the agenda as a recurring agenda item for status...
We have requested that on a quarterly basis.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and, uh, these, these three gentlemen here are gonna be providing us with updates, uh, quarterly, if not more often.
Dave, are we gonna go forward with maybe looking at what our, our litigation approach is with us at the same time?
Yeah, I, I...
Where we have a certain deadline, that we're not still having this conversation in six months?
I think one of the, um, I think we've got a couple of dates out there that, that Robert's been working with. May eleventh is one of them, that, that was another projected time that he was gonna give us some notice to and, and ultimately, when we started this process in December, um, we were looking at a completion date of July twenty-seventh. Was, okay, we're gonna be done with this. And, and so, I think we really kind of expect that that July twenty-seventh is gonna be the drop-dead date. And, um, um, and that we would, um, and each department can have, uh, can have its own methodology and has its own process that it has to follow in order to bring a case as a nuisance. The fire department has, has a set procedure that has to go through the fire marshal with an appeal process to the fire chief, an appeal process to the city manager, and then an appeal process to the city council. There'll be the same type of thing with, in the building code, uh, having to go through the building advisory, uh, board and the electrical board and so forth. So we're gonna have to just bring all of those, that, merge those together appropriately, uh, when it's time to bring something to you all.
Just so you guys are clear, we're, we're not upset with you. We know that you guys have been trying to get this fixed. So please know that you have, I'm speaking for myself right now, but I think you can tell that you have our complete support on what you're doing.
I just wanna stress that his arraignment will be the twenty-fourth of May, the trial, the first trial, will be June twenty-eighth. So the very first citation that we, that are in our court system now will not go to trial until June twenty-eighth.
So can we set this, tend to leave the first meeting August?
I believe we have already done that, uh, I talked to Jill about putting it, uh, putting it on that agenda.
I want to be in New Mexico, but I'll beg it for that.
We, uh, we do have one person that's signed up to talk about this particular item, Mr. Reed, you wanna approach the, uh, podium, please? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Russell Reed, five five one, East Harmon Drive, Midwest City. It's in order tonight just to stand in front of you all to talk about this issue. Um, I've been a resident of Midwest City for seven years. You know, I've sent you all a letter of my con- my concerns and feelings about the mall. I thank you, Mr. Byrne, for responding. Um, you know, a lot of my thunder's been taken with Mr. Byrne and Mr. Reed about, you know, maybe, I'll obviously it is what needs to be his wake-up call. You know, I mean, I don't know of any other way of letting him, like I s- you know, like I hear from Mr. Reed, I think he just thinks this is a joke, a game, for us to be played with, and that's not what, you know, the mall is tended to be. And to take advantage of the city and its citizens is definitely not what, you know, his attitude should be. Um, maybe we can go and, maybe the city can file, uh, force the sale to someone that actually has a plan, something that is in, that they have the motivation and that has experience with this type of field, you know, instead of just buying structure to use for storage. Um, I was listening to the fire marshal, uh, saying that, well, you can't just stock the chains because with the hazard material and et cetera, maybe there could be somebody that can remove that hazard material and then maybe we can, then maybe we can lock, you know, take possession of the mall. You know, in that, in that letter that y'all read, that, I, I feel the same way, it's, it's just an excuse, just if he, if he really cared, he would be in, he would be here, um, you know, if he really took the time and effort to, to take, to sidestepping, you know, put that into the mall, into what he had bought and promised the city, instead of, you know, I, I, I'm sure something would be done about it, you know, he would have made it into a prosperous, uh, structure. So, uh, that's all I have to say and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Reed, ma'am, I take it you wanna say something?
Yes, my name is Sharina Killingsworth and I am actually not a resident of Midwest City, but my company is SRM Global Partners. I, we came to this meeting specifically because we followed and been following the interest of what's occurring with Heritage Park Mall. And, um, we followed as well as the council's views and as well as the city, we've followed stories regarding it. I, when I was in college, I worked at Heritage Park Mall, even though I lived in Norman, so I commuted some very, and we have multiple people that, um, worked and are familiar with the mall. So, hearing everything that's occurring, I had a conversation with Mr. Berini last week. We have scheduled to meet with him next week regarding a development plan for the mall. Our company, SRM... Our company, SRM, back in August began working with the owners of Plaza Mayor Mall with the intention of a focus on multicultural economic development. Why, why did we do it? One, given the climate that exists where we're at in our economy, as well as the movement, even though they are failing malls across the country, they make great multicultural economic development centers focused on community, culture, and education, and services. Where Heritage Park Mall sits, it's prime for it. While I do hear the stories of failing malls, when these do occur, they are across the board ninety-eight percent occupied in most cases. So, we had an extensive conversation with Mr. Perini, I did. He is in the process right now of having a new roof put on the building. He does have an interest in doing something more. But I'm gonna tell you, like him and any other owner across the country that owned a mall, people come and they sell them stories. Everybody has an idea, everybody has a vision, everyone tells them how they can bring them a new concept. So, I hear six months ago, there, or in December, that, and I understand, we, we've been, we were following, we knew when the city passed that they were gonna do a, a study as to what could be used for the mall. We've watched it. So, knowing that that being the case, we wanted to see what that idea was. I want you all to think about for a second the state of our education right now. Education in public schools on the northeast side of Oklahoma City, education on the south side of Oklahoma City. There's a major push for charter schools. Charter schools are prime in multicultural economic development centers, to put a small school. You then also focus on mom and pops to come in and actually put businesses in. We spoke with Mr. Perini about that as well. We talked about a tenant that he had there before. We talked about the incoming tenant. We talked with Life Church and what they would like to see. We talked to the manager of Sears as what they would like to see. And they consensusly say they would like to see it grow. They would like to see it come back. They would like to see it be a place. We would like to see it be a place where the community can come together and follow a trend that is common across the country. So, we, we do several things. We look at statistical data, but we also look at, like, right now, even though there are failing malls, we talk about millennials. Millennials make up twenty-five percent of the buying power in this country, and those are age groups seventeen to thirty-seven, being on the low side. Those people shop discount. They shop, and that is an interest of one of the tenants that possibly may be coming there. Where Ross's position across of the mall is great. It is, there is a, they like the type of, they like an experience when they shop. We did something very simple at Plaza Mayor. We instituted karaoke every weekend. It's been a huge draw. How did we do? In six months, we were able to secure twenty-eight tenants for the mall. We did have some, because they were small businesses and hadn't really been in it before. About eighteen percent of the, never actually opened the doors, but they did make an investment to try to move forward. Where our company sits, and this is what we proposed to happen with Mr. Perini, is not only as an owner, but that we sit there in between and help these small business owners grow their business. That we, we develop marketing plans, we work with SCORE, we work with the SBA, to really help them grow. That is going to help also improve the economy for Midwest City. So, now, you, you do several things, but you, like I said, you bring culture, community, education, and services together. So, we, like I said, we have a meeting scheduled. It was very important for us to come, just to hear where the city was at. To kind of, I mean, we take it serious, and I'm gonna tell you, I told him specifically, you better take care of your tenants if we put people in there. You better take care of your building. And he talked to me about kind of some of what his plans were.
Well, ma'am, in, in the sake of time, and I appreciate you coming here and talking to us and sharing with us. I wish you the best of luck with Mr. Perini. I truly do. Obviously, there's nobody on this council that would not like to see nothing better than the mall be brought back to life. But Mr. Perini is on a very short time period. And the patience of our citizens, the patience of our council is very short as well. So, the conversation really needs to be occurring, not so much with us, but with Mr. Perini, face-to-face, nose-to-nose, whatever you've got to do to get him off high center. Because we are going to move forward with whatever we have to do to, to correct this issue in what it looks like six, eight, nine months down the road. I have no idea right now. But I appreciate, I truly appreciate your time and coming in. And if you'd like to come by and talk to all of us, or one, one or two of us offline, we'd love to hear your ideas. And again, thank you for showing up tonight.
Thank you very much.
Can I jump in for one second? Do you have a website associated with your business?
We have, we, because of the way we focus our business, we do have a website, but we also are on social media. SRM Global Partners?
SRN?
SRM.
M.
Strategic Retail Marketing.
Global Partners?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I've got the council's indulgence, we need to depart from normal order of business. We overlooked the fact that we've got a gentleman in the audience that wanted to talk about one of our consent items. Is that still your wish, Mr. Thompson? If you would, go ahead and approach the podium. Although we've already voted on it, we'd like to hear your comments. And I'm sorry for the oversight.
It's my fault. I didn't, I didn't write it down correctly. I, I'm still learning how the whole process works. Forgive me. My name is Charles Thompson, two oh seven West Kitty Hawk Drive, Midwest City. I just had a question. I noticed a lot of the stuff in the consent had to do with animal, the animal shelter. And I wanted to ask the question, why we're contracting with Oklahoma Humane Place when there's a really good facility just around the corner in Spencer, it's called Safe Haven? I didn't know if you're aware of that or not. But even if you look them up on Google, Safe Haven actually has a better reputation than Oklahoma Humane Place. And so, Oklahoma Humane Place is actually fourteen miles away, and Safe Haven's actually two miles away. It's literally around the corner.
Be quite honest with you, Mr. Thompson, I can't answer that question.
Cause you're embroiled in this Heritage Park Mall thing.
Well, we'll, we'll definitely take a look into it, Mr. Thompson.
The other thing I wanted to ask is, we used to have a contract to take care of Spencer's animals, didn't we? Didn't we used to do?
Yes, we've had some difficult relationships with them in terms of financial matters.
Right. Are there any other cities besides Choctaw that we contract with currently? Do you know?
I believe we, we do some contracting with Nakoma Park and with Forest Park, yes.
I just wanted to say one other, a couple, just real quick. I'm really impressed with the way that the bike trails have happened. And I understand that was a city employee that came up with that idea. That's a fantastic addition to Midwest City. And Mr. Henson, you, you sometimes look dour at these meetings. That Saturday, you just were full of joy. It was nice to see you smiling. I think that might be it. It was, it, it really is a great addition. A lot of my friends ride bike trails out at Draper, and that's a fantastic facility, first rate. And the other thing is, is the water treatment facility. The mulch that you guys saw, that, that our city sells out there, and it's places that you can take tree limbs and stuff. It's amazing. They, they do a great job, and that, that mulch is amazing. So, I would recommend anybody in the city, if you're planting anything, go use the city mulch. It's amazing. And I understand that that was kind of suggested by a city employee too. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Maybe we need to start talking to our city employees, cause they got some great ide, uh, great ideas.
We are, we are on a daily basis, Mr.-
Fantastic job. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion on anything before we move into the next discussion item?
Point of personal privilege.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this one forecast to be very long? Might we be able to take a quick recess?
I think we can facilitate that. Yes, ma'am. We'll be on recess for five minutes.
Thank you so much.
Next item on your agenda.
Next item is a discussion of the refinancing of the Town Center redevelopment project. Mr. Bob Sterns with Sooner Investment will provide a short presentation on alternatives that will be short for Mr. Sterns, is ten minutes or less, in the refinancing of the Town Center project.
Good evening, I'm Bob Sterns. Our loan at Town Center Plaza is up in October of this year. We're allowed to pay it off as soon as August. Pretty perfunctory in our world. These loans usually last for about ten years. And our ten years is up. We've gotten lucky on timing. There's a lot of big money chasing very few good deals. And this is a good opportunity for a lender. We're mostly leased, hundred percent, pretty much all the time, with great tenants and retailers that are doing well. The new loan would, let me back up a second. What we want to do is at Sooner is employ HFF, who's a national firm, to procure lending bids for us that we can choose from. We have given them parameters, and one of those parameters is to divide this loan into three different parcels. There are some expectations that Sooner has that we have delivered to the lending consultant, the mortgage banker, and expectations. The loan term will be reset, so the amortization will start all over, and, and that will help with the monthly payments. The new loan should have a lower interest rate, depending on what could happen in the marketplace over the next few months. Usually, these loans are tied to corresponding treasury rates, and they're so much over the treasury rates. And corresponding means the, the term is corresponding.
Mr. Sterns, the, the current rate is, on the note is six, six point something?
Yes. I think, I think six point one. We would expect this new loan interest to be in the low fours, so that will be an improvement. In addition to the funds necessary to pay off the three existing lending institutions, we anticipate borrowing about a million and a half extra to make repairs to the parking lot and, and to improve the life expectancy of the- and to improve the life expectancy of the parking lot. You have two choices at this point in time. You can patch and buy yourself another four, five, six years. Or you can go in and actually fix the subgrade problems, repave the areas that have failed. And then top coat, and you should double the life of this parking lot. So it's a good investment, plus by us making our investment, we can enforce the tenants, some of the tenants that are responsible for their own parking lot, like the restaurants for instance, to repair, make repairs to their parking lots. So we would expect them to do that. We expect it to be about a million dollars on their part. We also anticipate escrowing about five hundred thousand dollars to make any deferred maintenance repairs. I don't know of any. But in these situations, the lenders often come up with some. And if there isn't any, the money will be escrow for future maintenance items. The plan would be to divide this property, not necessarily in a subdivision basis, but for loan purposes, to divide this property into three counterparts. The first one would be the Lowe's and the circled or squared restaurant parcels that you see up there in the front. Not the Best Buy and the JCPenney's. The reason I'm doing that is because I'm of the belief, and so is our consultants, that there are lenders for what they call safe product that will give us a longer term. And that part of the project, which represents about fifteen million dollars of the loan, would self-amortize. So it would amortize on a twenty-five year basis, similar to somebody's house. The second loan would be for the balance of everything that was built, with the exception of the JCPenney's. And that would go to secure the main loan, which would probably come from an insurance company. And any excess proceeds that come out of the first loan would go to reduce how much we would need to borrow in the second loan. And set aside these escrows. We're anticipating trying to keep the JCPenney's free and clear, to give us a little cushion in case one of the bigger boxes goes dark or JCPenney's goes dark. I'm not suggesting they do, they are. They've given us no indication of that. They have had massive closures throughout the United States. We're not on the list. But in anticipation of that, we'd like to keep that set aside so that we would have the ability to borrow emergency capital with the city's approval. The other reason I wanted to set it aside is in the repayment of all these loans. There's three loans, one to Midwest City National Bank, one to forty eighty-six Insurance Company, and one to the hospital authority. And all these three loans would be anticipated to be retired at closing of the new loan. We would request that the Lowe's lease, the anchor rent, be subordinate to the lender, which means they use us collateral. By having the JCPenney's free and clear, that enables me to still have a bookmarked space for what we call the anchor rent, for those of you that were here when this thing started. And category, and between the JCPenney's rent and the excess rent over and above the payment for the first loan, that would be secured by the out parcel of the Lowe's, there's enough money to cover that anchor rent. That's not the sole source it comes from, but that would be the first line of defense of protecting the anchor rent.
Mr. Sterns, so if something were to occur with JCPenney, if JCPenney was part of the formula for the anchor ground rent, and we had a, you know, a period, obviously there's, there will be a desire to re-tenant that space as quickly as possible. But, I mean, that doesn't, that may take a little while. So what, where will the, how will the anchor ground rent be secured?
Well, it will take priority over all payments. So if there's not enough income to cover the anchor rent through the two sources I've identified, then it would just automatically roll into the shopping center distribution and the anchor rent would be paid first. Before any other proceeds are distributed to any of the other partners. Or even any other rent to the city, that would take priority over the other three rents that they receive. So the goal at the end of the day is to obviously keep our center, reduce expenses, and increase income over time. Lowering the rates will go a long way to do that. I'm anticipating, if everything works out perfectly, that there would be an additional seven hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue by the rearrangement of the new financing. And a borrowing of an additional two million dollars for escrow for future and present repairs. And a return of principal to the hospital authority in excess of three million dollars would also be expected at closing.
Mr. Anderson? I'm assuming that you have looked at the paperwork, that is what he's briefing us on, correct? But you've looked, you've had a briefing in depth? And based off of what he's told, shared with you and the city manager and what he shared with us, you don't have any reservations about us passing this on, other than the one that you brought up and that's been clarified?
We're not offering to do that at this time.
Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Mr. Sterns, do you have anything to add?
Only that, that I think this will turn out to be a very positive move. I've been in this situation before where I was paying six and now I'm paying nine. And that's much more painful than it going the other direction. We've got a very successful asset over there. I've thought through what needs to happen here for over a year now. And I've tried to address any potential ramifications as best that I can. And I think we have the very best plan available to us in the marketplace today. What I'm here today to do is to make sure that the city, the citizens, the hospital authority are behind this process, understand they're part of it and what they're going to need to do on a technical basis to facilitate this. And I plan to work diligently with staff to negotiate as close to what I've asked the lenders to provide as I possibly can. We expect to have multiple bids from multiple national suppliers of capital. It could be everywhere from a CNBC fund to a insurance company. And those are the people who usually fund these things. They don't grant much flexibility, so we have to be very careful with whatever funds that we borrow from them and make sure that we're okay with what happens because their overall penalty is onerous in that you can't pay the note off early. If I get sick of my banker, I can pay him off and it doesn't cost anything. But it isn't necessarily the case with these permanent lenders. They put them in a drawer and they just expect you to abide by the document. You never see them again. There's nobody to call. So you're on your own, so the structure that you use going in, and the goal that I had in mind was for this asset to behave, operate, and be able to function financially on its own without outside help. And that's why I've tried to set this structure up so that it would accomplish those goals without taking any undue risk that we shouldn't take in the marketplace.
Thank you for your diligence in this. Chair would entertain a motion.
If I might provide a little guidance on that motion.
Oh, that's right.
To approve authorizing Sooner Investment to contract with HHF regarding refinancing of the Town Center project and authorizing the assignment of the anchor ground rent to the subject lender.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? Ladies and gentlemen, we'll move into the public discussion, new business of our agenda. Anyone have anything to bring before the council? Hearing none, we will move, or the chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session. Have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? We are now in executive session. All opposed? Any abstentions? We are now in executive session.
The only one to stay?
Jimmy John's.
Jimmy John's.
No one else is here.
Yeah, and they're super fast.
They're fast.
It's, it's on the horizon.
Okay, we're now back in session. The Chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve items as discussed in executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Okay by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Any abstentions? Any further discussion? We are now hereby adjourned. We now open up the Midwest City Municipal Authority Agenda. Call this meeting to order. We do have consent agenda.
So we need a motion to consent. Agenda without reading it?
I, I, I can go through it. These items are placed on the consent agenda. So the trustees of the Midwest City Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any one item does not, does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience, we should discuss an item with the trustees that I'm moved and heard in regular order. And Chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
First discuss, first discussion item, discussion consideration of approving the termination of the water and, the sewer and water agreements with Yes Companies EXP LLC for the Water and Sewer Service, provided in the Timberland Mobile Home Park property east of the corporate limits of the city of Midwest City.
Move to say no to yes.
I have a motion. And do I have a second?
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Are there any new business bring? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. Follow the words of the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. Do have consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda. So the trustees of the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority can, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If anyone either does not meet with the approval of the trustees or members of the audience, we should discuss an item. The trustee, with the trustees, that I'm moved and heard in regular order.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Chair has a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Discussion items?
First item is discussion consideration of accepting the hospital authority investment performance review for the period ending March thirty-one, twenty seventeen, in action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make change, changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. Uh, we would request a motion to approve, accept the, uh, the quarterly investment performance review.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any discussion? All indicate, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Next item?
Uh, next item is discussion of the refinancing of the town center redevelopment project. Staff would recommend, uh, the trustees authorize sooner investment to contract with HHF regarding refinancing of the town center project, and authorizing the assignment of the anchor ground rent to the subject lender.
Move to so authorize.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Any new business bring for, for the trustees? Hearing none, uh, the Chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Move to go into executive session. Second.
I have motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any conclusions? We are now in executive session.